Hello again, and welcome to Lee's Summit Town Hall, a weekly podcast about what you can do to make a difference. I am Jason Norbury, and as always, I am joined by a man who is currently seeing me in a whole new light, or at least new camera.
It's scary.
It is Nick Parker, the publisher of Linkin' to Lee's Summit. Yeah, I know. The light is scary. Actually, so you know, this is, well, let's go right to the unofficial sponsor. Is the unofficial sponsor today is, is the rules of audio broadcasting? And one of the key rules of this modern era of audio broadcasting is don't talk about your video problems. But as a whole, because a video, a video cue is not useful to someone listening on a podcast. But Jason bought himself a new webcam, so I am, I'm a slightly different tone and in a lot more pixels on the video feed. If someone wants to go to youtube.com or to lead, link to leesummit.com and see the video feed. You can do that. And you can see, you can see my beauty in, in full HD sharpness. It is something to behold.
This is a reminder. This is a reminder for us.
That we should be on podcast.
For radio.
Yeah, this is why we are on radio. There we go. So anyway, that's a, so Nick, what's going on?
There's my answer. Nah, I'm kidding. There's not a lot going on, Jason. And really, there's only one thing that I want us to get to, and that is our next candidate interview. As we are meeting all of the candidates for the Lee's Summit R7 School District Board of Education election. There are two seats, as we've said, two seats available and four candidates vying for that. And we are at our third candidate this week. We are going to talk to Christine Bushyhead and get her perspective and her thoughts on issues facing the community and the school district. And then stay tuned. Next week, we will have our fourth and final candidate interview with Michelle Cerber. And if you go back to our website or backward on your podcast app, you can hear our interviews with Roderick Sparks and Ryan Murdoch. And with that, Jason, we'll go to our interview. Christine Bushyhead, candidate for the Lee's Summit R7 Board of Education. Welcome to the podcast.
Thank you. Thank you for the invite.
Well, I, as you remember from when you did this last time, I like to start things out really difficult for you. Why Christine? Why are you running again for a seat on the Board of Education?
Well, I am, um, I've been in Lee's Summit for a really long time. I care a lot about the community. I've volunteered. It's my, it's my second home. I've been here since 93. I think that the issues that were present that motivated me to, to run last year are still present, which, um, and in, in, in May have actually gotten even more intense. And, and I just could not, not try again. I really think I have some leadership knowledge and abilities and consensus building talents that could really, really lend itself to the position. I have an extreme understanding as it relates to budget. I think that that's a huge issue. I am, I, I am honored by the profession of teachers. And I think that we need to really look closely at our teacher situations, at both salaries, both diversity, all those kinds of things. Um, and I just, um, so I just feel like I, I can contribute to the community this way.
Okay. Well, let's start with the budget then, since you brought, since you brought it up. Now, thank you for building our segue in for us. I really do appreciate that. You, you stated in your questionnaire, uh, and I would quote this so that I'm not, I'm not misstating. That the district lacks financial credibility with its teachers, parents and patrons. And it is critical that that paradigm changes. So what, uh, what do you mean by lacks financial credibility?
So I, I honestly, it towards the end of my race, um, uh, last year I came upon, you know, you continue to develop your, your ideas and then do more research about those ideas and kind of get gut checks on, oh yeah, that's, that makes sense. Well, my big one was when I kind of looked back at that 2011 levy, which was the levy that, that it was 10 years ago now, where the district went and asked for an operating levy increase and it was denied by 63% of the voters said no. And at that time, certainly they needed it and the reasons that they stated in, in the, the, information was to eliminate a portion of the current cost containment measures and to maintain the quality of programs and students, um, you know, provide resources for the district's work and with comparable salaries for teachers and staff. And I'm thinking, okay, in 2011, those are the reasons that you put the ballot question before the voters. Did those reasons go away? And they didn't. Over the last 10 years, they've gotten worse. We had to freeze salaries. We haven't been able to expand maybe on some programs we need. We haven't been able to do some things because in my opinion, when the voters say no to you as an elected official, uh, then you say, okay, I need to pivot on this and find out what's the issue here? What is the tolerance? Or what are we looking for here? Why, why was the no so resounding? And how can we pivot back without giving up?
So are you thinking that's more of an indictment on the district and its response to the no vote? Or than it is an indictment on the voters?
Oh, I think, I think it's more, I think it's more a, a, what I've seen over the last 10 years is a failure to manage to, uh, in a manner that gives credibility for another go at it or a actual, they're saying, go sharpen your pencils. The voters are saying, we're, we, we need you to sharpen your pencils. Now think about this, put it in context. 2011, over the preceding five years, we'd already done a 90 cent increase and this was going to be another 90. But this is also in 2011, which we still were not moving out of the great recession. You know, the downfall, the downturn happened 2007, 2008. And now you are asking, you know, this type of an increase, especially on commercial homes or commercial development, not, and, and residential homes are impacted as well. I mean, it's, the timing wasn't good. The, the, the justifications weren't, weren't thorough enough because in this instance, this school district had experienced, um, maybe at this point, 15 years of automatic yes votes on anything put before that, put before the voters. This community supported wholeheartedly the R7 School District with increases and bond issues and operating and operating levies. But this was one, timing was bad and everything was going so quickly. And it was like, we really kind of needed more of a reset and that reset didn't happen.
So are you, are you, I mean, part of this is that that was 10 years ago. In the intervening 10 years, the district or the, the, the rep, the residents of R7 have voted time and again to continue the bond issues, including a, a massive bond issue just a year ago. Are you, are you saying that maybe it's time to revisit the, the ask from a decade ago?
I think that that could be a potential, but I think there could also be a very sophisticated ask that changes the levy proportions, but may not change the overall levy. But again, that has to be an examination of, of really, what are we spending our money on? And, um, what, what, what do we want our education plan to fund? And it isn't going to be that complicated of a review because, you know, the way I read the budget, out of the 250 million or so, you know, 100 approximately 180 million of that is salaries and benefits and retirement and things like that, which makes sense because that's what education is. It is the people. It is the teachers. I mean, the heart of education is the teachers. And, and that's going to be where your biggest expenditures are.
Well, let's go ahead and ask the big question then, where, you know, from your seat, from where you're sitting, and if you're on the board, where do you, where would you want to see more money allocated? If, if, if you were to champion and add another ask to the voters, where do you think the district needs to put money that maybe it's not now or needs more in a bucket now?
Okay. Well, I want to be clear. I'm not saying that that's not a, and at the voter, and voter intervention of some kind is, is necessary. I don't know that. I'm not, I am open to it. But I don't know that because I don't know the budget that intent, that in that kind of detail. And I wouldn't. I mean, it's not my job. It's my job to understand the budget enough to provide direction to, to, with the rest of the board members to go a direction with it. But, um, so I just want to be clear on that because I, all I need is for someone to say, oh my gosh, it's a tax and spend candidate. I mean, that's not what I'm talking about.
Well, I mean, that's, that's coming now, no matter what. No, I'm just kidding. So, well, let's, let's ask it a different way, regardless of whether they're saying, are you, obviously you, you raised the concept of sort of a reallocation, not even of the levy rates, but of, of the resources within the budget as it exists or will, will exist. Where are you, where do you think, given your review and what have you, that reallocation may best be oriented?
I think it has to go, I think that we need to, we need to spend money on the classrooms because it's going to achieve a lot of things. Once it's a gap closer, it's also sir, it's an equity piece because if we can close, we, in closing the gap, we do that by instruction. So you have, you know, we definitely need better reading literacy type programming. Our dyslexic learners, our English, um, our English language learners. And also our kids who come to the district that don't necessarily have the same vocabulary. I mean, we all know, or the same base. So we all know that there are times when our kindergarten teachers greet our kindergarteners, that some of those members, kids in that class know their ABCs back and forth. Other members of that class do not. And some members of that class may actually know and identify words like dog and cat and sit, but other kids don't. So there's a piece of early childhood developed that needs to be an intervention there immediately. So we're talking about resources in the classroom. I, I think we also need to look at smaller class sizes. We may not be able to afford for, you know, I don't think we need to worry about high schools much, but like K through eight. But if we can't do K through eight, can we do K through five? I mean, it's, it's like, we need to get a more intimate, uh, number so that our teachers can do the work that they are good at. I mean, for me, I can't even imagine, and especially as a COVID mom who had to teach for, for two months, um, I, uh, I, I can't imagine trying to move 30 kids through a subject matter and have 10 of those kids on an IEP. I mean, that's impossible. That's an impossible ask for our teachers.
Well, let's dig in a little bit there. Um, so really for you as a member of the board, if you're elected, how can you, how can you champion that and affect change in those ways? What, what is your role as a board member doing that?
Well, my role as a board member is to come there with some ideas about what I think, what I'd like to see happen. And one of the first things I would like to see happen is with the board is to have a board retreat to be able to have an idea of how we are going to work together, maybe talk about leadership styles and, and how we want to, to lead the district. Um, and maybe policy governance might be a good thing to have a lesson on.
Speaking of stuff I heard you say 10 years ago. Okay. It was more than 10 years ago, but.
You're right. And you know what? It is still real today. Is that amazing? Because that's what government is about. And then that is some of the ways in which we can have conversations. Some governments, not so much, but I mean, some of the government aspects that we have, we have to, you know, are not tailored to, to school administration and school function and, and, and mission. But we are in the end, a policymaking body, just like any board of directors. And so how are we going to work together? And then we need a budget, uh, I think a budget retreat where we as a group have that conversation about where we think the, where we would like to see the education plan go and where those monies should be spent. Now, we don't have to know the exact dollars on that because then we say to staff, here's our goals. Here's where we wanted to, is tell us how much this is going to cost us. And then let's start having that conversation. But don't, you know, I'm, I hesitate to say have our perspective completely budget unrestrained because you've got to be real in that conversation or it's a waste of time. But by the same token, don't let that completely limit the fact that I'm not going to accept that we can't, we allow the class sizes to grow because that's how we reacted to not getting money in 2011. I, I want to reverse that. I, I just do. I'm, I'm going to come with that agenda. And I'm hoping I can convince at least, what do I need, three other people, that that's a priority.
So you, you talk about like a small class sizes, early childhood education. These are some of the pieces that are in the equity plan. When you, when we asked you in the, in the survey to rank your relative priorities, you, you had noted that the, um, that your, that was the lowest one that you ranked of them, um, on that, on that process. And then you, and it sort of on top of that, you wanted to talk about having conversations about diversity and equity that are, uh, uniting and not divisive. What, in the last year specifically, I think obviously there was a, there was a great deal of conversation about equity, uh, with, with Dr. Carpenter, the prior superintendent. And that, if nothing else, perhaps the tone of the conversation has shifted somewhat, or maybe you think it hasn't, um, in the year with Dr. Buck. Where are you, where are you seeing that the conversation now about equity is still divisive? Or is that really more of a relic from, from the last superintendent?
No, I still think it's divisive because I think the subject, the way the subject matter is being approached by the current, um, um, equity consultants is not inclusive.
Who is it excluding?
It, it is, it is emphasizing race, black, white. It doesn't have a broader perspective about telling stories. It has, um, and it is, it is directing a, a, um, social agenda that is not education focused. Um, we, we, we are not finding, there is no research-based evidence that having a conversation in the approach that's being taken by our current consultants is moving the dial at all on achievement, which is why it was here. So that's why it was introduced to our district. But I think that really, if we want to talk about true equity, we need to talk about a different approach to that. And that approach is all about focusing on education, focusing on literacy. And, and I think also early intervention, like with the kids and also with the transfer students. So I think the equity plan, um, and I've said this and I, and I still say it, we're two years later. I haven't seen anything tell me we, we've done anything to move the dial on education. And we have, you know, we don't have action items to move the dial on education specific, but we have a lot of rhetoric, a lot of conversation. And I, I just think that a more, a conversation about diversity and inclusion and a conversation that talks about equity in terms of finding ways to elevate and raise our marginalized groups and intervening as soon as possible in their learning is, is, is true equity. I mean, if the outcome is that we want to have all of our students have every single opportunity, then that's where the focus and the energy and the resources need to go. If we want to have a conversation about diversity and inclusion as a, as a, and how, how we need to make sure from a social perspective that our, that our students are informed of all perspectives. Well, we do that, we, we can do that. We do that anyway.
How do you think that you, you, you balance that? And I, and we've talked a little bit about this with, with the consultant and with, with administrators in the, in the district as well. But how do you balance that? Because there is a social piece to the entire conversation. So how do you, how do you balance that, that social aspect of having that conversation with all of these educational?
You don't speak in absolutes. You don't speak in absolutes.
I, I'm not quite following what you're saying there.
You don't, you don't, you don't incorporate a vocabulary of absolutes that, that, because for instance, you, uh, privilege. The experience of everyone in this country is so varied that it's, it's just, you know, sometimes offensive for me to think that we have to be so absolute about this is the way, this is, this is what our America is. Okay. We can say these are characteristics of our American community. These are the ones we like. These are the ones we don't like. This is like where we'd like to evolve through together. But I'd rather cast a vision that's inclusive of that evolution. I'd rather think about what do I want to look, this to look like at the end of this, at the end of this evolution, this stage of this evolution of this conversation? And then let's work backwards from that. And anything that causes anyone to pause, anything that says we are authorizing an adult to go into a classroom or into a training session with a teacher and tell them that they are flawed from birth because of the color of their skin or their nationality or their gender or their orientation. I mean, wouldn't it be great if the goal at the end of the day was that we don't have to check those boxes anymore? Wouldn't it be nice if a gender questioning student didn't have to check male or female? Wouldn't it be nice if our multiracial, which is our, our largest growing population of students, didn't have to check a box on one half of their identity?
Well, here, I think.
Is that the goal? Is that, is that, because that's what I'm casting.
Okay. So I'll, I want to, I want to pop in here and just, uh, and ask this question then. So you, you're obviously, I think your, your vision of what equity, an equity process looks like is a little bit different than the one that the board has identified, um, as their primary goal. And, and we have, uh, had, you know, we, as Nick said, we've had the consultant, we've had the superintendent. We've had, uh, well, the then equity, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, uh, administration staff person. We've had students on who have all talked about the, the difficulties that they've encountered, especially the students did. I think, uh, our, our students' input on that has been actually quite moving and quite touching. Uh, but as well as the administration has been positive about the work that they've been doing. Um, you are extremely critical of what has happened because you haven't yet seen an academic result, which the consultant got on the, was there at the dais when, uh, they was there to, at the initial interview and said, those numbers aren't going to appear, um, like instantly or in the, the immediate future. This is a long-term process. So you may come into this, into the board with a, a different vision of that than the board has as current. And I think even some members of the board who are initially skeptical have, have shifted their opinions somewhat, having gone through the trainings and the what have you. How do you anticipate needing to work with the board to, to find a vision that's there? What do you, what do you anticipate doing? Are you, do you tend to go and get three votes and change things? Or are you intend to, how do you, how do you see your, your relationship and your role in that process?
Okay. So a couple of things there. One is, um, I think the priority is education. I think equity is diversity and inclusion, uh, in, and equitable access to educational opportunities is part of that education process, but so is fine arts, so is athletics, so is our, our special needs programming and any kind of educational programming that we put in there. All of those have, have budgetary responsibilities that impacts on education. So all I'm saying is, is that having, I, I think the conversation is extremely important and has a role. But it, I don't, I don't understand it being a driver for education if equity can't be shown as a driver for, uh, research-based results that make, make education better. So I'm saying it's a component of it, and I think it just needs to be placed in its perspective because education is the, is, is, is the mission. It's what our, what, what the responsibility of the board is, is to provide for education. And I think that the equity conversation is part of that. But I think that it's just the, the way that it has been, has been approached, um, is, is not broad enough. It's, it's just not broad enough. So to answer the other part of your question about what would I do about that is, it takes, um, um, I would come to the board with a creative, a, a, a dare to lead courageously approach and ask to have these conversations, um, present, um, and, and full, um, in, at the dais. And I think that it needs to be done, but the reason I want to retreat is it has to be done wholeheartedly. Everyone needs to be vulnerable. Everyone needs to really have, have the real conversation about impacts of telling, telling, uh, telling someone that they're flawed from birth because, because of whatever way they were born. And, and I think that that's not the conversation. The conversation is meet the child, meet the students where they are and get them to where they need to be and where they want to be. Because there's a want to this too, that we have to, to have to teach. You have to teach to learn. Teach kids to learn just as much as you teach them subject matters. So, um, all of that is so much work that I think that that, if we, if we focus there, we're going to, and we honor the, the diversity conversation, then we're going to get everything that we want. We're just going to get it all together and in an environment of respect, integrity and kindness. I mean, and, and that conversation. So for me, that's what I'm leading. I'm going to dare to lead a wholehearted, vulnerable conversation. I'm going to keep myself in there as hard as I can. I gut check myself all the time on these subjects so that I can be there full, full-hearted. There's no secret agenda here. I'm as transparent as I can possibly be.
Well, let's, uh, before I get to my, my final really hard question, um, you know, you just talked, you talked a lot about leadership and transparency. You know, one of the things we hear year in and year out, Jason, this is what, the fourth or fifth election cycle we've done now since we started this endeavor.
It feels like it's like the 90s, but you do.
You know, we always hear communication, whether it's, whether it's communication among, amongst the board members themselves, between the board and the superintendent. I believe our last two superintendents have shown what happens when that communication isn't there. But then also a lot, we hear a lot from constituents, from the voters who say, I'm not getting the right communication from. So, so tell us a little bit, kind of your thoughts on that and how you can make sure that, that you're communicating with your, your voters, that you've got that good back and forth relationship with your fellow board members if you're elected. How do you approach those things?
So, um, that kind of, transparency is part of that. Okay. So, and communication to me, and I, and I've discovered this, uh, because I've, I've, uh, in my more recent public service, I have sat on boards that were not, um, um, that were not common to what I usually did. So hospital, you know, hospital, you know, medical field kind of stuff. And the minute I sat down in there, I mean, the acronyms started flying. I mean, this, and this, and this, and this. And it's like, okay, yes, you have your industry and you have your vocabulary and I need to learn it. Um, so I can be an effective board member. The education industry has a vocabulary too. And I think that a lot of times we're seeing people talking past each other because we're using acronyms we don't understand or we're, and we're, or we're not really understanding the speak that is education speak. So for me, one of the very first things I would do, because this is what I've done in any board that I've been on, that, that is that I would, I've already done a lot of research. So I, I can say these little phrases that, you know, and I think I know what they mean. But honestly, communication starts at the board where we actually understand what we're talking about. And we aren't afraid to ask questions, especially if staff, wait, wait a minute, what does that acronym mean? What do you mean by that? Where does that come from? How long have we been doing that? I mean, it's okay to ask those questions because everybody has them. It's like, if I don't understand it and I've been elected to make decisions, then I need to answer, ask questions. So I would say from a communication standpoint, we need to ask more questions. We need to, um, be more transparent, uh, transparent with the vocabulary of the industry. And we need to honestly take the time to communicate on the dais and not behind the scenes.
Well, as we wrap this up, I, I can't give you the usual question that we give people because, well, you did it last year.
And.
Give her credit here. You answered correctly last year, but I have a follow-up. Uh, you know, this is a 12 months later follow-up question. During the entire pandemic, you already told us you prefer tacos over burgers, which is the right answer. But over the last 12 months, as we have lived a mostly isolated lifestyle, how has your appreciation for tacos increased?
Well, let me see. How can I cleverly answer this question? Well, let me see. How can I cleverly answer this question? I would say that.
If you want to be clever, you are on the wrong podcast.
My, 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 uh, my valuing of tacos has become far more diverse because I have been trying, and our family has made a concerted effort to patronize as many restaurants as possible during the COVID. So we've had tacos from places that I've never had a taco before. So I would say that it's enhanced greatly by variety.
Look, I think if you are to set a mission for anybody, whether you're elected or not, but you tend to get around in the public. If you can set a mission and a goal for everyone in the community, champion more tacos from more taco places. That's a good one.
That's a good one.
Christine Bushyhead, thank you very much for, for, for joining us and sharing your perspectives and thoughts for the voters so that they can be better prepared as they hit the polling locations in April. That will wrap us up for this week. We'll talk to everybody next time.